Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Cleveland Heights City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. It is Monday, February 5th at 6:00 PM. Addie, would you call the roll?
Russell.
Here.
Boyd. Maddox.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Kuda.
Here.
Tom.
Here.
I'll let the record show that Councilwoman Boyd emailed us letting us know she would not be here tonight. The first order of business is I need a motion to go into executive session.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion at this time to go into executive session and consider the sale or lease of city-owned real property.
A second? We have to, is it roll call?
Tom.
Aye.
Kuda.
Aye.
Petrus.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Maddox.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Okay, we're out of executive session now and we're going to skip the mayor's update for right now. This presentation and move to legislative review. I just want to remind everybody that we're going to use Robert's Rules of Word, so just please make sure you've been recognized. And I don't know. Yeah. Anybody have any questions on the, anything on the agenda that you want to direct to either the law director or the mayor? All right, so there are three resolutions that are for first reading with adoption requested. You know Larson to the Dome Brook Watership Partnership. I take it there's nothing there. The point in Joe Strauss is an alternate member of the Architectural Board of Review. Joe Strauss was on the Architectural Board of Review. He was replaced by the alternate and now Joseph Strauss has been asked to be an alternate. So pretty straightforward there. And then number 13, 2024 is a resolution recognizing National Freedom Day. So those three are for adoption on first reading. Any questions about those? All right. First readings, we have 14, 2023, a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit the amended community development block grant entitlement application and plan for the year. Any questions about that? We are going to have a presentation on that at a future meeting. It hasn't actually been decided what day yet, but we're going to have a presentation to our in committee of the whole for that. Oh, please.
Assistant Director, you are you?
Hi.
My question about this going back to 2019. How did that happen?
So, I don't know, I should address that a certain way, but so the legislation, the CARES Act was passed in the spring of 2020. So at that point, the only election thing that was approved by HUD was the 2019 plan. So in order to add, they had to amend our 2019. So does that, that legislation has nothing to do with the regular 2019 funds, just the?
And by the way, I never have any problem with council discussing first reading, even if it's first reading only because, you know, that way at least when we do a second reading, we're not starting from scratch. Next one is 15, 2024, a resolution authorizing the mayor to the communities, also the community development. And then there's a few third readings. 189, 2023 is the Youth Advisory Commission. Right. Vice President Russell, did you want to?
No.
Yeah, we've discussed that already. Resolution 19.
If I could, I would just mention that the one change, I think, in this from the last version that council saw is that rather than adopting a new chapter and adding to the list of chapters in the administrative code, this now repeals the existing Youth Advisory Commission, Chapter 148, and replaces it with a newly adopted Chapter 148 Parks and Recreation Youth Advisory Board. So you save a chapter number in your administrative code and the Youth Advisory Commission wasn't sort of constituted at this point in time. And so it's just basically administrative efficiency. But that, that was different in the last version.
Okay, so.
The law director recommended it.
So do we have to vote on an amendment eventually or?
No.
Oh, it isn't, okay. And then 190 has been removed because we're actually still doing some work on that, so you can take that off. And then lastly. Yes.
No, 190, you have the most up-to-date version, I think. That doesn't include 190.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, that was on the Wednesday, the Wednesday version, the Thursday version. Okay, and then finally, 193 is the WXC agreement, which we discussed will be, we're going to do a third reading, but we're not going to vote on it tonight. So I guess we'll just leave it there and. All right, so council rules and legislative process, if it's okay with everybody, let's start. Well, first of all, let me ask your clerk, did we get any?
I have not received any communications from any members. Yeah, regarding their updates or anything they want to.
So did everybody receive my kind of rough draft proposal? So just for the people in the room and Anthony who just doesn't know. So what we're trying to do here is come up with a process, a legislation process for, for council that will use for administration initiated legislation and council-initiated legislation. So I just, I wrote a little purpose statement to create an agreed-upon, orderly, equitable, and transparent process for council and administrative-initiated legislation that makes passage both timely and more likely to be successful. And so I wrote up a summary of what we would do when it's administration-initiated legislation will introduce, you know, it'll be introduced by the administration, put on the agenda by the council president. All first readings can be discussed in committee of the whole. Council president assigns legislation to the committee if further discussion is necessary. And throughout the process, all questions will be answered promptly and thoroughly by the administration. And then eventually a vote takes place after a majority of council determines the number of readings. So if, for instance, something from the administration came to us for first reading for passage, it would be up to council to decide whether that's enough. And then, you know, if we do, we'll, we'll put it forward. We usually do two or more readings and, and when we have a majority that's ready to vote, we'll, you know, we'll vote on it. And a good example like today, we're not ready to vote on 193, so we're, we're going to put that off until February 20th. Any questions about that or any input on that? Please, councilman.
Just so we're clear, the draft here is, does it eliminate what's in the original draft, everything that's in there?
Well, it's at least the new ver, your new version of what was originally.
I'm just trying to do a one pager to kind of boil it down.
Okay.
I mean, if there's something, you know, that you want to add from the, you know, you personally, just out of your head or?
No, no, I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure so the four-page document has been shrunk, so it's only this.
I, I shrunk it, but I'm not the last word on this. This is just, you know, what makes sense to me. All right, and then on council-initiated legislation, and this is, it's a little more complicated, but, you know, still it's only five bullet points. So ideas for drafted legislation, and that's up to the author, you know, when and how they want to introduce it, will do it in a, a committee. If it's your committee, you know, then obviously you ask the chair. If you're the chair, you introduce it. If it's, if you want to do legislation that's in somebody else's committee and you're not a member, ask the chair. You know, hopefully the chair will say yes. But I want to have a safety net. If the chair says no and you want to go forward, come to me to put it, you know, to committee of the whole and, and I'll most likely do that.
President Kuda?
Yes.
That doesn't really say that here, and I'm really hoping that if people have an idea that would be more appropriate for a different committee, that we could collaborate on it. So I don't see this as a safety net necessarily, maybe we can add some more words. First, that if that person who's got the idea approaches the relevant committee chair and they work together.
Yeah, that's, that's in here. So that's, so in parentheses, it says, "or the appropriate committee with the permission of the chair." That's, that's what I meant. And then you, you work with that chair and those committee members. So let's say I wanted to, you know, or let's say you wanted to do something with a committee you're not on. I'm sorry, I don't, I was memorized.
Environmental Services and Environmental Sustainability. He said, "which you're not on."
No, that you're not on.
Planning and Development.
Planning and Development.
So let's say you have some, some big idea for that and you go to Vice President Russell, who is the chair. You would, you know, then you would work together on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if for some reason, I'm just, and I'm not suggesting this is going to happen, but just if, if it did, you know, and she said, "Well, I don't have time," or I don't, you know, then, then come to me and then we can discuss putting it on the committee of the whole agenda, so at least you can put the idea forward.
That, that's my concern. I, I don't think that, I think it should go directly to the committee of the whole to discuss for discussion from a, I think that's a decision that leadership should make. I would, I would like, because if otherwise, there's members of council that may never hear about that legislation other than the chair of the committee and the president of council.
But you got to read down, I think we just haven't gotten far enough on this yet, so, so keep that thought and, and let's keep going. If there is at least one other member on the committee supporting the idea, I'm on number two under council-initiated. If there's at least one other member on the committee that supports the idea, further research and development is done by the author and any co-sponsors, if that's applicable. And this should be done by motion in the committee. So if you go to a committee meeting and, and you put your idea forward and they say, you know, at least one other person says, "This is a good idea," then you can move forward to the next step, which gets to Councilman Maddox's, I think, it's what.
I don't, I don't, just respectfully, I don't think it answers my, my question here unless maybe I'm misreading this. It, it still seems like the control rests solely either with the committee chair or the council president. So if I don't get authorization from either committee chair as an author for someone else's committee or the council president, it won't ever get introduced for council to see at all unless I'm reading this wrong. So, so it, it does rest solely on the council president to decide if it goes to committee of the whole.
Well, the council president always decides what goes on the agenda. That's, that's in the charter.
My concern with this is there could be a very good piece of legislation that both the chairman of that committee and the council president don't think is a good idea. However, every other member of council could, but they wouldn't know it because they've never seen it, so.
Well, that would happen, that would happen hopefully in step three. Once the idea is drafted, or the idea or drafted legislation has been approved by a majority of the committee, it shall be brought to committee of the whole for discussion. So in the case of, if, if it's not approved by them, then I would, I can tell you that I would look favor, I would want to put it forward on behalf of that, so.
I would, I think it should be put forward and, and I don't think it should be the president's discretion at all in this case. I still think it's problematic because based on what could, because from what I'm seeing from number three, it only gets that far if the chairperson allows it to at that point. So what happens if it doesn't get that far? There's still no stopgap for what could be a very good piece of legislation to get discussed by the members of council. Number three only speaks to if it gets that far, but the chairperson may never put it on the, on the agenda in the first place to be discussed and committed. And that, that's, that's my concern is that face, it is, this is written, it appears as if two people are making a decision, the chairman and the president of council, whether or not the majority of council sees something that could be a benefit to the community. And that, that's what I would like to avoid.
Let me hear, let me hear from others, go ahead.
Okay, since this is a draft, Anthony, why don't you email something to Addie to add to what you want to see there? And then we can discuss that at the next meeting.
Well, I disagree with this part of the process, so I wouldn't add to it, so.
No, I mean, or eliminate, or eliminate or rework.
Yeah, just fix step one to make some wording that you think would be.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
What it is, that would get to what you want to see happen. This is why we're discussing it, to, to make amendments. So please, please feel free to do that.
You can just draft something that you think would fit or that you're looking for. Yeah, you know what I'm saying? Then that's, it's easier to add it because we can all see it in writing and maybe understand. I understand what you're saying.
I was going to say, that's my question, does, does, do the, my fellow council members understand what I'm saying here?
I do.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the part I just want to make clear.
Yeah, so yeah, if you put it in writing, it's just easier to just stick it in.
If three members support the, so now we're in committee of the whole. If three members support the proposed idea or legislation and there is at least one other member who is not opposed. So this is, I want you to know what I'm thinking there. So I can understand why something could come to committee of the whole and people don't want to commit to saying, "Oh, I would definitely support this," especially if it's just in the idea phase and it's not yet like written in legislative form. Because you might like feel like the idea is a good idea, but you know, there might be some details that could possibly be hashed out in the, you know, when the law department's writing it up that you might not agree with. So you don't want to commit to that. So I don't want to say that, that what needs to happen in committee of the whole is you have to have a majority of people who are for this idea again, or legislation. And that's up to the author as to whether, how, how far along a product is that they want to introduce to committee of the whole. But if, if at that time, there are a majority of people who are not against it, I'll just put it that way, then the author will submit the, again, idea or drafted legislation to the law department. And at that point, the law department and the author will meet to discuss the drafting of the proposed legislation. And then lastly, when the author is satisfied, the legislation will be put on the agenda by the council president and introduced in committee of the whole for passage. Go ahead, councilman.
For clarification, so if a committee felt like as a part of its research that it wanted to talk with the law department, it could do that during number two and not have to wait until after number three. Is that correct?
I think the, I think the law department, and I don't want to speak for the law department, would look favorably on it going to committee of the whole before it goes to the law department. Mr. Law Director.
I mean, I, I think that's generally a fair statement without getting into the weeds of this. And we, this is a conversation that I've had with several people, that I think a lot of times the discussion between and among the members at a committee of the whole meeting provides an opportunity for me to hear, because somebody else is attending for me, to hear different viewpoints, get a sense of what particular issues may be concerning members, think of ways to address them, and to be more useful and help prepare higher-quality legislation after that discussion. As opposed to sometimes just a request to prepare legislation during A, B, or C, which is hard to do because a lot of times there's a lot of moving parts. And so you make a, a judgment in drafting and when it gets to council or to the requesting member, it may or may not be what somebody was calling.
So Councilman Petrus, if you bring something in legislative form to the, to the committee, there's no reason for you to go back to the committee. If, you know, because you'll have passed it, there is going to be a motion or there should be, this is the way it works. Thank you. There should be a motion in the committee to move it forward. And if, now if it's an idea, you're just, the committee's just authorizing the idea to move forward. If it's actual legislation, then after it's introduced in committee of the whole, you don't need to bring it back after it's written up in the law department or maybe tinkered with in the law department, I would say if it's our, you know, and then brought back to a committee, there's no reason for that.
I guess my thought was that suppose there's a question like among committee members about whether something's possible, whether something is legally possible. Is it okay for us to reach out to the law department without asking for them to prepare legislation, just to clarify whether something is allowed before, you know, proceeding with that sort of work?
You know, ask two questions a month. Yeah, I mean, I think typically we try to be responsive to those questions. Sometimes the questions are bigger than somebody may anticipate and we can have that conversation, but generally that's fine.
But that wouldn't preclude that.
No. Councilman Larson?
Yes, I would like to see added to this process that Addie is tracking these pieces of legislation as they get introduced and where they are.
That's, that's a really important stuff. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Sort of following up on the law department, I think it's important that early on in the process, the idea or the notion at least be run by the law department. So we don't spend a lot of time in a committee having a hearing and only to discover later on that it's illegal what is proposed or the ordinance conflicts with the charter or something like that. The other concern that I have and why I think it's important that the idea be brought up early on in a committee of the whole is to alert other council members that this idea is being looked at in someone's committee because not all the time are we paying attention to what's going on in someone's committee and only find out about the legislation after something has been drafted and it's brought forward and things sometimes take on a life of their own. I, I'm just speaking for myself, I don't want to be put in a position of having to pass legislation that I have some issues or concerns with that might have been addressed had I known about the legislation and had the opportunity to go to a committee meeting to comment on it.
So councilman, can you please write something, you know, just?
I will, yes.
And then, I mean, that makes sense and I get it, you know, we don't, that's a big part of this process is let's not waste our time or anybody's time and let's not make, you know, have secrets from each other either.
Yeah, ma'am, just make a suggestion on that, that council people bring that up during committee reports during regular council meetings.
Good, good point.
It's a good place for it.
Is it on the record? Yes.
And then just a few things, I put, I did put some asterisks here. If the author's idea for legislation was not drafted at the time it was first introduced to the appropriate committee, it should be reintroduced to the committee. So if you just come in with a, you know, kind of a notion and somebody in the committee says, "Yeah, that's a good idea," but you really, you don't have anything written up, after the committee of the whole discussion, it should go back to that committee because that, that committee, if it's introduced as just an idea, has not seen any legislation. And then at any time during the process, the author may consult with the appropriate director or the mayor regarding the idea or legislation. You know, that's sometimes an important part of the process. If the information that the author needs is something that is esoteric enough that only, you know, maybe the director or the mayor, and the mayor has graciously offered to help us, you know, on any kind of policy issues. And then lastly, and I say this, you know, without, I mean, I just don't want any, I don't want anybody to be worried about having an idea or any legislation and just because they talked about it publicly, you have to worry that, you know, somebody's going to try to do something, you know, kind of around their idea. I just wrote here, let me, let me finish this and then I'll. At no time should any legislation under discussion be co-opted in any way by another council member or the administration. I don't want anybody to be afraid to bring something up, you know, until it's fully baked, as the saying goes, just because, you know, they have to worry about somebody trying to, you know, maybe doing it around. I'm not saying anybody would do it, but I can tell you from listening to council, past council members in past councils, there, that has been a worry. I don't even know if anybody's.
That's what I'm asking for clarity.
Let me, let me just, I'll gladly recognize you. But if, if, you know, if there's just any slightest doubt in anybody's mind, I want to make sure that we've all made that agreement at some point, that that's something that we're not going to do. Right, councilman?
Now, just as for clarity, can you give some type of example? Because someone could have an idea and two people could be working on an issue with two totally separate pieces of legislation for the same topic. So that's why I want clarification on that, that happens. In fact, you have legislators who can write opposing pieces of legislation on the same topic, so this doesn't address that either. So that's why I'm asking for clarity on what this is.
I mean, if somebody literally came up with another idea at the same time, two people introduced it on the same day, I don't know. I mean, I would, if it came to me, I'd probably advise them to work together on it, but outside of that, I'm just talking about the idea of somebody bringing up something in this room and then, you know, a week later, somebody's, you know, "Oh yeah, that's a great idea, I'm going to start my own." You know, we, we should not do that, we should agree to not do that.
I think if I disagree with the course someone's taking on a piece of legislation as a legislator, I think it's my responsibility to, to work on something, I think, and introduce it. I don't think it's in competition of someone. I think offering that discussion up, I think, is actually a healthy way to do that. That's why I guess I'm asking for clarity. Does that mean that if two people have an idea about, I don't know, safety on the roads or so, like what, what does that look like? Because they both have the same subject, like where does that end, I guess is my clarification. Because when someone brings up something in a committee, it could be, they could say, "I want to do something with the parks." How, how, how specific are you saying someone has to be before it's someone's piece of legislation? Because if it's, if it's not written, it's before a committee and it's just an idea, that's all it is. And so that's why I'm on clarity on that.
Well, I mean, the best I could say is like Councilman Russell's about to bring up, you know, it's a little further down on the agenda. Oh, it's the next thing on the agenda. A dog park, you know, I don't think somebody should go, come up with a separate piece of legislation for a dog park. If, if person had wanted to do legislation that we ought to not have dog parks, I would consider that a different, you know, a different piece of legislation. I wouldn't consider that actually competitive, but I don't think somebody should write up another dog park legislation. You know, that would be, to me, that would be unnecessarily competitive and combative almost. So that's kind of, and, and look, my goal here is, is I want, I want the playing field to be very level here. I want everybody to have the same job and doing their work. Everybody on this council, I assume, got elected so they could do their own initiatives. And I want to make it as easy and as orderly and as success likely as possible. That's, that's what I want to see happen. So the two of you will write up a couple of little changes here?
Three. Gaia, my son, two.
Okay, sorry, three. And then we'll take a look at this, here's what I, here's my, my vision that we, on February 20th, we go over whatever it is that people, we've discussed today. And well, I would look very favorably on making a motion to adopt this as the process that we use. I'd like to do that on February 20th, if, if, if we can come to an agreement, yes.
One question, President Kuda. We have these resolutions that a council person introduces, which like tonight, we have one. What, what would you say the process is for that? Just notify the president and the council that you have wanted to make that kind of a resolution.
You mean like the Freedom Day one?
Yes.
Yeah, right now, Addie has all those on a list.
If you got one, I would just let me know.
Check with you.
I think what you're saying is what if somebody comes up with something that's not on the list? And I would, I would just suggest that, so you're saying that would not be something that would go to a committee, so. Yeah, yeah. So yeah, I would just, yeah, just, just bring that to me.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I have a question about sort of the plan for this legislative process proposal or this set of rules for the 20th. Some of these rules, not necessarily all of them, implicate rules that are currently in Chapter 111 of the Codified Ordinances. And so I think that at some point, to keep, I don't know if you were contemplating an amendment to Chapter 111 or if you were contemplating sort of a freestanding, separate set of rules, but I think you'd have to figure out how to relate them and make sure which one applies. And you mentioned earlier the charter, charter doesn't say. And you mentioned earlier the charter, charter doesn't say a whole lot about council rules in general, except that council can adopt them to govern its, its procedures and the adoption of legislation and so forth. And it also says that once adopted, they can only be amended by a vote of five members. And I think it does take legislation. So I'm happy to talk with you between now and the 20th about what that might look like, but I wanted to get that on your radar.
So I'm, I'm glad you asked that question. And what I'd like to see happen is council by motion, adopt this as our rules, I'm sorry, as our process, as our legislative process, and maybe give like a, I don't know, a six-month trial run and then we'll just see if there's an appetite on council to, to codify it in 111. So for now, I'm not, that's not what I'm looking for. Is there anybody that would like to codify this now? I mean, because I, I, that's not why I put this forward. I put this forward so that we would have a transparent, equitable process, level playing field for all seven of us and that we've agreed upon it in public so that we, so there's no ambiguity about it. And then, you know, again, if down the road, somebody, maybe all of us, think it would be a great idea to codify it, I think at that time, we could look at, you know, what we would have to do to write it up as legislation.
Okay. I, so I'll, with your permission, reserve the right to send you some comments about this between now and the 20th. Because I think that there, there will be some cross-referencing and cross-providing that may be necessary to make sure everything works as intended. And that includes some other comments on some of the substance as well. I'm thinking about things like the, I have no reason to believe anyone's looking to compete on any pieces of legislation, but I think council can restrict council introductions of legislation to some extent. But the administration reference here, I mean, the only person on the administration that introduces legislation is typically the mayor. And the mayor has a charter-provided right to introduce legislation. And so I just want to make sure that all of this is worded in such a way that it works with all the governing documents.
So that asterisk and the others are for council-initiated legislation? I'm not, I'm not applying that, and, I mean, I did not put this on here to apply to administrative.
I was just looking at the very end.
Yeah, it says administration.
That's the part that jumped out at me.
I'm sorry, I see, just, yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I was going to ask, why is that on here?
I mean, I just, I mean, I was just thinking that I just didn't want to see anybody do it, you know, but I understand what the law director is saying.
Yes, some of it's wordsmithing and, again, just making sure we know what currently exists, what you're proposing, what it's intended to be and for how long, and then how you pull it all together, so.
Okay. Yes, Council Vice President?
Yes, once everyone sends their updates or corrections or whatever to Addy, could Addy then send those to us and then we can look at them and be prepared to see what everybody's additions are prior to the 20th meeting?
Yeah, that would be good. I think, I think, you know, we don't want to look at it for the first time when we're, when we're sitting here on February 20th.
Just always just don't, just don't reply on.
Right, no, everybody goes, everybody
For your information.
Yeah.
No discussion, just, just the
Just send it to her, then maybe she can put it together and kind of send it to us and then we can look at it. So we, we have an idea what everybody's thinking about prior to, to make the process go easier on the 20th.
And I, I do want to thank her, maybe you want to thank Josie Moore, I don't know, did you want to?
Yeah.
She did do some work on, not on, she did the work on the initial legislation.
I do want to thank
Pardon?
Former counselor, Josie Moore, for getting us started on this discussion with her proposed legislative process in 2022, which is kind of what we've been working off of.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so the next one is the, the council rules of conduct. And we didn't really get anything back from anybody. I just want to say that, you know, even though section 111 of the, of the administrative code and Robert's Rules has, covers a lot of this, I do think it's a good idea that we come to some kind of agreement about our behavior and our processes. Addy, I take it you did not get any, incur this either? Okay, so I'll just open it up to any discussion on, on the rules that we have. We did some, just so people listening and watching are in the room, we did distribute this two weeks ago, three, three weeks ago, to all the council people. This was drafted by the council vice president. It's a draft. And anybody have any comments to make about this?
No, Anthony wanted to add or some things.
I guess I have the same questions I had.
Would you send, send something to?
So I'm uncomfortable with continuing to do this, and I'm going to tell you why. I, I feel like continuing to send concerns and questions and comments stifles the public's hearing of any of the issues or conversations that we're having, and it also doesn't bring a lot of context and clarity. And, and so I think if we're going to have conversations about things like this, I think we need to solely do it in public versus continue to send things to Addy and have them distributed. We're missing a lot of the nuances and what we need to discuss, and it's going to create a lot of back and forth. I'm also concerned that it's going to end up being even an accidental round robin where all of us are having a discussion. So I think, I don't mind sharing any of my feelings here, but I, I have an issue concern continuing to send thoughts to Addy when the whole purpose of committee of things like this, seems like we keep sending it through email. And I, and I've noticed the influx of them since January, so that, that's my concern. I don't mind discussing this and I have some things that I want to share, but I don't think we could continue to have to send things to Addy. I think the public deserves to hear at the meeting what we're, what we're discussing. That's why I brought it up last week.
Go ahead, Councilman, I have a
Okay, so that was not my intention. My intentions was to discuss it, but I, my thought process, if you find or see something that you want to change, no problem with discussing it, but for us to be able to see it in writing. Usually if you're doing an amendment or something like that, you want to be able to see what a person is saying or talking about in writing. Once you explain, like you said before, you understand what you were saying, yes. But I would like to see it in writing to see how it would fit within the document. So I'm not trying to stop anyone from discussing it, I just want to be able to see it as it's written into the document so it reads, or I can read the flow of what you're saying as well.
So I, I think in my case, it wouldn't be
I need to recognize people, you know, I'm sorry, I really, I really need to do that.
It's fine, I thought we were going back and forth, that's fine, Mr. President.
Yeah, I'd rather not do that.
Whose turn is it, this is the
No, it's your turn.
Is it okay?
No, I want to try to finish.
Oh, it is your turn, so, okay.
I'm sorry, no, I was, what I was trying to do was let let people go through it, explain their pros or cons, then send whatever that pros or cons are in an email to Addy. So then the next document, that, whatever you expressed is in that email, I mean, in the document. So now we can read it and it's in a flow of what everybody's thought process is. So it's not to discuss it, but it's to stop the, I guess, so we're not talking about it for a long, long, long time, that's all.
Go ahead, Councilman.
So, yeah, I want you to, to be able to express
So, I could see if I was adding rules, how that would make sense, but I think if I'm discussing what's here in things like defining terms, I, I don't see the reason for me to email Addy that. For instance, my, my concerns with this document are, again, what, what happens if someone disagrees with any of this with council? Again, what's the process for them to discuss it? That's not something that I would write out of process in, in the rules. Whoever suggested these, I think, needs to bring that process to the table because I, that, it doesn't exist. The other thing is, there needs to be defined meanings to some of this. What, what does this mean in terms of a, conduct themselves in a professional and respectful manner during council meetings? We had last year a meeting where we posted a previous YouTube video of us speaking and that was called an attack by the member of council. So my question is, who's defining this language and what is the remedy for someone who disagrees with this process? That needs to be written into the rules as well as clearly defined exactly what an offense is, and some of these words aren't defined. And I don't think I'm the appropriate person to fill this out considering I, I didn't create this document, but these things should be in this document. I think if you're going to create rules, you need to build a process around those rules as well and it needs to be clearly defined for everyone at this table. Otherwise, when someone raises one of these issues, i- it's going to be he say, she say, it's going to, everything is based off of opinion. I, I think this needs to be clear about what the process is, what the remedy is, what any hearing or discussion, what that looks like, what the timeframe is, and exactly what some of these definitions, like a personal attack. Is a personal attack bringing up an issue that you have that you might see as legitimate, but the other person does not, but the public should hear about? And so that's my question. Someone could feel attacked just because someone is bringing up something that they said. And so this needs to be clearly defined, in my opinion. And those aren't things I think you can just fill out and send to Addy. I think we need to have a discussion around process.
So can I make a suggestion? I think if, so there's, to me, there's two types of communication that I think we should probably have between meetings. Otherwise, it's Groundhog Day, we're starting exactly where we were the next time. One is if, if you want an explanation, I think you should just write, please define. In other words, no conversation, not, you know, here's the problem I have with it, that should, that, I agree with you, that ought to happen here. The second part is, if you actually see something in here that needs to be changed and you have a suggestion, you know, it says this, I think it ought to say that. What this does is, if you, if you send that to Addy and she distributes it, that gives us a chance to think about it. So then when we, when we discuss it in committee of the whole the next time, we, we have a starting point. It's, it's just, it's so hard to extemporaneously, when somebody brings up some, you know, here's the language I'd like to see here, and you're just, you're literally seeing it for the first time and you haven't had a chance to think about it, you know, it's, it's, it's a little bit harder. Sometimes people just like, they're not sure what you mean or whatever, you know, and then, and it also lengthens out the time. So is everybody okay with the idea of doing those two things? One is actually making amendments or, you know, changes and sending them out. The second is, if you have a question about what something means, just putting, please define this so that the person who is going to speak on it can come prepared, please.
I still don't think that answers the, what is, what will be the process for this, if this happens to a member of council? What's the process? Who's creating, who's building that?
We should be doing it together.
When, when does that happen? Because I think if you're going to do this, it needs to happen as a part of this, and that's, that's my question.
Okay, so why don't we discuss that at the next committee of the whole meeting? Because I think that's, that's something that we can't put in an email, I mean, there's nothing to
That's, that's what I was
Yeah. But does everybody agree that we could email changes and so forth? And, yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, one thing that occurs to me, and we haven't been great about doing this, is so, for example, this legislative process proposal, we're often talking about documents and circulating them at the meeting. I think we need to find a mechanism so we can get those posted.
This is, this one is posted, the document from last
The most recent one?
Not the most recent one because I just got it today.
So let's, can, do we have an ability to post these on civic clerk?
Yeah, the other ones were in the packet.
And so, for example, our email documents, since we're referencing it here at this meeting, should probably get posted someplace.
Correct, I would imagine they would be posted in the committee of the whole packet the next time that we discuss.
Okay. And then when we get things handed out to us, as often occurs, can we make sure those are getting made on the public record?
Yes, I've got a, there's no way for me to post individually to civic clerk. So I'll have to just redo the packet, which is fine, I can have it included.
President Kuda?
Yes.
You just indicated it was an amendment or a change or
It would just be included, it would just be included then.
Or dated or something.
Yeah, I can date it, yeah.
I'm sorry, I forgot, I'm not in my living room. Mayor, is Archer here?
As far as I know, no. Some wire must have been crossed at some point and so we might have lost part of
No, that's okay because I'm just looking at the time and I'm like, oh, if they were here, we'd have a tough time getting them in and getting out there by 7:30. Okay, so, yes.
I just wanted to make the statement that this is totally a draft, nothing in stone. I pulled this from different people's rules, from different cities. So I wanted people to put their input, put whatever they thought needed to be changed, questions or whatever, and so that's what this was about, so I'm just making that clear for everybody here.
All right, very good. Sister, just, yes.
So I guess both a comment and a question. So my impression after, or at the last meeting, was that we were supposed to read through the documents and if there were specific changes that we'd like to see, that we should pass those along to Addy so that she could pull them together, share them with everyone, so that everyone could then come to the meeting prepared to discuss those. Whenever I saw the packet and saw that the document was the same that it was when we first discussed it, my impression was that Addy did not receive like any comments. So, and so I, I guess that I sort of maybe wrongly assumed that everyone was okay with that, that there were no, no changes that were being requested there. So I guess, just so that there's a good understanding, am I hearing correctly that for our next meeting, what we should do is that if there are changes that we'd like to have made, we should send those to Addy, who will collect them and then publicly post them, distribute them to everyone so that we could come to that meeting prepared. So anything that we want to bring up in the context of this document, we should send to Addy in advance of the meeting.
That's, that's what I'd like to see happen.
In the advance of the Wednesday of the packet going?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
But to be clear, that's not necessary.
You don't have to.
You don't have to do that, that's what I wanted to make.
No, I mean, you know, we're still going to discuss it. All right, item number five, discussion of potential and upcoming legislation. Vice President Russell is going to speak about the dog park.
Correct, President Kuda?
Yes.
May I suggest, because we have a lot of folks in this room right now and will be at council meeting, that we discuss the Israeli Palestinian situation?
Well, we will, but I, I, I think, we've got 15 minutes, we set aside 15 minutes, so then we have 20, so I think we're good.
I will be quick. I have proposed legislation that Bill and I are looking at. And this is pertaining to the dog park in Zuma Heights. We're going to be looking at a location for the dog park. My thoughts are, which I need to get clarification, all these things that I'm telling you now would need to be run past the mayor as well as the director of Parks and Recs. We're looking at a possibility of dog park being at Cumberland Park. That's a potential location, but we still would be able to look at other locations and find out what would be feasible, how large the dog park would be. We will be looking at that versus an acre or half acre of land for the dog park. Versus fencing, we will be finding out, looking at fencing for the dog park, if it should be a wooden fence, a chain-lit fence, all of that type of thing. Estimate costs on design and amenities regarding the dog park and water for the dogs. Also, the cost for the structure of the amenities and the fence as well. Maintenance costs, I, we did have a discussion with Director Ledbetter through Park and Rec Advisory Board where we talked to him regarding maintenance and he was in favor of the dog park. He was favored that it would not cause too much burden on his department because I really wanted to make sure that it did not cause a burden on his department. So he was in favor with that, developing rules for the dogs as far as large dogs, small dogs in the dog park, changing some of the ordinances within the charter that deal with dog park information. I talked about design and structure, the waste of the dog park. So these are engagement, and we will also have a community engagement process so we can hear from the community based on location, amenities and things that people want to see. We want to make sure it's in a space, a space where it's not causing a lot of noise to residents. And that's one of the reasons I kind of looked at Cumberland Park because it has a large, empty space there that a dog park could go and it would not ruin residents. So maintenance and upkeep, and so those are the things I will be looking into with the permission of the mayor, talking with Director Ledbetter and moving forward with Director Hannah from him and his and I of discussion around the dog park.
Any questions?
Keeping in mind, we just discussed the legislative process and keeping in mind that it came out of your committee with approval of two, of three, all three of us, I think.
Yes.
So where would you see as an example this would be at this point? So where would you see as an example this would be at this point?
Right now, we're just talking about, based on what Vice President just said, you're finding a location and costing it out?
I think you're trying to figure out where I'm at with the process. So what had happened is, she's talking about the process we were talking about. We went into, we discussed this as a committee of the whole. We had, all of council was there, except I think Anthony was not there. They were on, on.
On Zoom.
On Zoom. Cobb was there, Melody was there. That's the same time I brought up the other pieces of legislation. Janine was on, you were in the room, and you were neither. And we talked about the dog park, we talked about, there were four other pieces of legislation at the same time. We voted to, the committee voted to move it forward. At that time, I took it to Director Hannah. And speaking with Director Hannah, he talked to me and said that he thought it would be best to bring it to the committee of the whole to let you all know the further details that I needed to put into the legislation to bring it forward. He asked that. I do this process, and that's how President Kuta came up with that process of taking it to the committee, then bringing it, I guess, talking to Bill, figure out if we need additional stuff, bring it to the committee of the whole. And then he's able to draft the legislation part.
So I think we're somewhere between four and five.
That's another way to say it.
Yes, that's another way to say it. But for the people who don't know what four and five is.
So can we expect to see something soon?
Yes, hopefully, with the mayor's permission, may I be able to contact and talk with Doc, Director Ledbetter regarding some of these topics?
Let me discuss it with Ledbetter and I'll, I'll get back to you.
Okay. All right, so once I'm able to talk to Director Ledbetter and have a conversation with him around things that I need to talk to him about, then I will move forward with the director and putting together a community meeting.
Okay, very good.
So I was just going to say, our conversations preceded my receipt of this outline. So I was thinking that this was sort of like step three, is what I was, I was thinking that it was coming from committee to committee of the whole. And I was looking for, you know, again, from my own selfish interest of making my job easier, hearing from committee of the whole, like, about locations and size and, and things like that. So that there's a consensus that's kind of big in as that discussion rolls through. But, you know, we'll, we'll roll with the punches and try to get this done however it goes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice President. Madam Vice President.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Sure. Okay, um, next, the Israeli Palestinian, Palestinian discussion. I, I just want to say, just based on, first of all, thank you for all the emails. We got a lot of emails from a lot of people. There's obviously a lot of interest in this. But I want to make it clear that there is no resolution that we're discussing. I mean, we may discuss a resolution, I mean, if somebody brings that up. But there, there is no resolution that is being voted on, on the agenda. And I hope this discussion is, you know, focused on bringing people together. And I don't want, if, if any council members choose not to speak, I don't want that to be misconstrued as, you know, they're caring or whatever. There's just some people that, that have, they would rather keep opinions about these kind of things to themselves. You know, we, we do generally do talk about things like dog parks and, and, you know, those kind of things here, you know, municipal services and so forth. But I'm, you know, open the floor to anybody who would like to speak on this.
So I guess my question is, are we going to take a look at what our former council president submitted as a starting point?
I mean, that's, I mean, you could make a motion if you want to do that. I mean, I, I, I don't have such a motion in mind. But it's, to me, to me, right now, the discussion is, is, is open if you want to start it.
I, I am starting it. So, and I'm asking again, I brought this up at the last council meeting. For some reason, it seems like we're acting as if we don't have drafts that we could look at or discuss or review or, or put something together. And so I guess my question is, am I missing something? Because I, I'm, I'm feeling like I've never had such a difficult time just bringing a discussion to a table like this. And it wasn't like this when we did the first resolution at all. And I think it at least deserves the same level of discussion. And so our former council president submitted this document, regardless of what anyone feels about her. I think we at least owe it, considering she was working on that as a member of council and we were okay with it at the time, to discuss that. We've gotten several documents from residents that I have heard have been passed around, and I've seen several. So I, I guess, are we not going to discuss this at all? Is that, is that the expectation? Am I the only member of council interested in having this conversation at this point, is my question? Because last, at the last council meeting, I felt a struggle to just get it on this agenda. That there was, there was no opening to have that conversation. Doesn't seem like there's an opening now. So I, I guess my question, if we're going to start this conversation, is, is this something that this council is interested in doing at all?
Yes.
I would say, at this point, I was expecting that we would have an opportunity to have that discussion. I'm not prepared at this point to vote on that particular document that former President Hart introduced. I do want to read my statement regarding the situation, if that's okay?
Right now? Please.
This is such a complicated and challenging issue. I've received emails and had conversations with citizens supporting a ceasefire or supporting a ceasefire only if all hostages held in Gaza are released and Hamas is eliminated. Advising that council should not be taking, and also advice that we should not be taking a stand on an international issue. And examples of other municipalities that have produced resolutions about the Israeli Gaza conflict. My lived experience since the Vietnam War on my college campus in 1970 tells me that innocents suffer while the leaders drop the bombs. This situation in the Middle East must come to an end. I recognize that. In my role as a member of Cleveland Heights City Council, I represent all of our citizens. Peace obtained through diplomacy is the only right answer to returning the 130 hostages held in Gaza, saving more innocent lives, providing humanitarian aid in trying to rebuild Gaza and damaged parts of Israel. The only way that gets done is by the leaders, the world leaders representing Israel and Gaza coming to the table and saying, more no more. That is their responsibility. My responsibility is to try to stay focused on the work I agreed to do during my campaign for the citizens of Cleveland Heights. This work has been put aside these past couple of weeks to make sure I have the best information possible to contribute to the base of discussion. I hope we can all make it clear today that we care deeply about the people in Gaza and Israel. I'm just not sure that a resolution is the effective way to tell our citizens we are. Will it make a difference to our country's leadership? Can we have the patience to let the leaders negotiate peace?
Thank you, Councilman. Would anybody else like to make a comment?
I, I guess my question is, we, we didn't have a problem weighing in. We made an original statement, a resolution about Israel. Why is this a struggle now to acknowledge any portion of this? I guess it's my question for council, as if we're discussing it.
Yeah, go ahead.
So much has changed. So many things have changed. There's been so much time that's gone past, so many people have died. We have to look at this clear eyed in terms of what is our responsibility here as council? And I represent everybody in this room. So I, I, I am trying to figure out the best action to take. And the resolution at this point is not something that I am prepared to do unless we carefully, carefully vet it. Nothing done as quickly as we did. We did the Israeli resolution very fast. And not carefully.
Go ahead, Councilman.
And I guess that's my concern. So are we not going to address anything but that and leave it at that resolution? I agree that a lot has changed. More lives have been lost than even when we made that resolution. And so I guess my, my question is, how could we remain silent now? But we had no issue when there were less lives lost and more. So I, I guess that's my context. So we're not going, is this, this council should say nothing now, but we were okay addressing those lost lives then? But the lost lives that are happening on both sides now, we're going to sit and say nothing, even though we have representatives from this city and this community who represented them then. And we have folks who represent both sides now. And, and so we're, we're going to say nothing at all. I guess that, that's my concern. I, I, I guess I'm, I'm not just surprised by this. I'm, I'm speechless about the fact that, again, I feel like I, I'm fighting just to get the conversation happening at the table that nobody wants to happen. We're, we're saying that we care, but we don't want to address it any further in any way. And, and so I guess I'm, I'm confused. Silence does absolutely nothing. But I think if we were going to choose silence, then we shouldn't have made a resolution in the first place. We should have stayed out of it. But I think it's a slap in the face to say that that was acceptable then, but silence is acceptable now. At 100%, that, that's where I stand. I, I think it's hypocritical to allow our community to come in here and support this. And we did. We heard, we got emails from everyone. We were questioned about why we were not at rallies. We were, we were, we were told that we supported Hamas unless we strictly gave out our schedules for where we were on the days that certain things happened. And we, we cared what the public thought then. We cared when they marched in. We made sure that everyone at this table spoke out, with the exception of Councilman Petrus. And now we're going to say absolutely nothing. And I, I'm confused about why that is. Why is that okay? And it's worse now than it was before. So that, that's my question. So if we don't, if I don't draft anything up, I guess it's my question. If I don't submit anything, it won't happen at all. I guess it's my question to this table. I just want to make, make it clear, because I don't want to waste my time. I don't have a problem making a statement as a councilperson, as a pastor, as a human being. I don't have a problem making a statement. I, I can address loss of life on both sides. I have seen it myself. Death is no joke. Just a matter of years ago, a 17-year-old was shot in the head three times and died in my arms on the streets in this community. Violence is real. Life is real. We can address this and be respectful of both sides, and I think that's what leaders are called to do. I don't think just doing a resolution and then washing our hands and doing absolutely nothing else, that's not leadership to me. I don't, I think that there are people in this community who are expecting us to say something, to address it. And, and I think we need to do that as, as a body. I really do. If, if not, I think it needs to be addressed anyway. And, and I, it's clear to everyone here, clear that I'm going to say something if we don't. But I would like, as a body, for us to say to this community that collectively, we, we want this to stop. Collectively, we care that lives are being lost on both sides. Collectively, we care what happens on the other side of the world, because it does have an impact here in this community. And I, I'm not hearing it at this table, I guess. And so that, that's what I, I just want to get down to. Like, are we not going to say anything at all? Because if that's the case, I'd rather we just say that now at this table, so that it's clear to the public, it's clear to me, it's clear to everybody. Say, well, what, what else are we going to do? But I, I, I think we deserve to be able to address this openly as we did with the first resolution at this table. I just do. I just do.
I understand that. Anybody else want to speak on this? It just seems, based on everything that we've heard from the community, that, you know, there's kind of an equal group of people that think we have no business weighing in on this, you know, before or now. There's a group of people that want us to weigh in on a ceasefire resolution. And then there's a group of people that say, if you say the word ceasefire in anything, that would be the worst thing you could do. And so it seems to me, I, I, Councilman Max, I, I think I understand where you're coming from. And I think you've been very clear. The problem is, as I started this, you know, this discussion, it's, it's, if there was a way to say something and bring people together. And I, I think, Councilman, some of the things you said, or all the things you said, are, are very helpful in that regard. And I, I don't have a problem with anybody making a statement. But right now, I have to say that I'm not, I'm not for moving a resolution, no resolutions I've seen, because I think it would be divisive to the community. So it is 7:28. More about, is, is there anybody else that wants to speak? Because I certainly don't want to touch any.
I guess that's my question. Is that the feeling of the rest of this council? That we're just not going to pass a resolution? And that they, we're not going to discuss this any further? Or is this something you're interested in continuing to discuss?
I mean, Councilman, I would assume that not hearing anything, that there's not an appetite for another resolution.
I, I heard it loud and clear.
With that, this committee of the whole meeting is adjourned at 7:29.